Field School Board Meeting of November 1st, 2023. First item is pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, Zach is running a few minutes late, but we will know in the minutes when he arrives. We're going to review the minutes of October 4th and October 18th. Do I have a motion to approve October 4th? I will second Ellen and Kendra. Nick Beck arrived. Does anyone have any comments about the October 4th minutes? All right, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Oh, abstain.
Ken. I'll give you 30 seconds to sit down. Okay, on to October 18th. Do I have a motion to approve the October 18th minutes? All right. You'll have to leave for this one. Finya made the motion, I'll second Kendra. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, on to immediate business. First order of business is public comments.
Greg Whitmore, North Road. The Deerfield students came to Pembroke Academy last, I think it was last week. And they actually ended up walking through my classroom. A couple of human, real human skeletons out on the table. It was, it was a nice response from the students to say the least. But it was very nice to see them, to see them excited. And to just, you know, that, that kind of scared, anxious feeling where they're seeing these new places and ultimately getting to make a decision as to which one suits them the best. So that was very nice to see. But I'm sure they'd like to know where they're going. So we've had eight months and, you know, people ask me all the time, where are the eighth graders going next year? I don't, I don't have any answer for them, obviously. I'm hoping the board has an answer very soon because those families are really looking for that. I remember meetings over the, or a presentation a while ago. And there was, I saw there was this November deadline for choosing classes. It's November 1st, so hopefully we're gonna get a decision very soon and move forward on that. And I keep going back to this, this two, the, the two plans that were proposed, you know, as far as high school options. And that 70% that Concord is requiring for enrollment is just really sticking with me. And I'm wondering, why are we allowing Concord to hold us hostage with that? I mean, Cole Brown's coming at us with open arms. We'll take him, you know, and PAs in the mix. They can take some, you know, I have no idea the amount, but they can certainly take some. But it keeps coming back to Concord and them demanding a certain amount of students. But we don't want that, you know, we've been very clear, we don't want that. So we gotta get past it. I was reading through an email between a board member and a Deerfield resident. And it all came down to this one sentence that I think perfectly sums up the disconnect between what's been going on the last couple of years. And the reply from the board member is ultimately the purpose of meetings is for the elected board members to conduct the business of the board. Well, we certainly value and encourage public input. It is the board who is charged with making the decisions. Man, that really sums up the frustrations perfectly. Because the town has voted multiple times on huge items in the last few years. And the town has said very clearly what the town wants and it's, it's just not happening. So we gotta get past this. We gotta move on. The directive's there. Let's give the town what it wants. And let's do it sooner than later because families are waiting and they're, they're getting pretty nervous. Thank you.
Other public comments?
Bobby Anne Dosti, 5 Brown Road. I want to thank you for all that you do. And I, I need to give Ms. Whitty some props because she is juggling so much. And I hope you know how much she does in the school. I wish I could give her just so much kudos because I'm not gonna go into detail, but just, just know that you have a really, really good principal there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? Agenda review. No consent items?
No.
Okay. We will need a non-public which letter?
A. C and K.
Right, busy non-public.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add to the agenda? Okay. We will move on to the budget presentation.
Can I introduce the people that helped with me tonight?
Yes, please. If there's an extra pack, I'll take it.
I think I have one. I'm so sad. So tonight, joining me is Amber Wheeler, Business Administrator at the SAU office, and Jessica Beckford, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services at the SAU office. So thank you for having us.
Thank you all for coming. Really appreciate it.
I'm first gonna take the lead on the presentation.
Excellent.
All right, so as I, as you had at the last meeting, you had the principal's budget presentation that, you know, really took a look at what the coins were for the building. And I've added in several line since that's more of, or less the overhead, transportation and special education. So what I have before you in your packet, I have your packet that looks like a book. And then I've also given you budget summary. So I'm just gonna go through this budget summary to let you know what's in here. So what I've included in this revised packet you're gonna see tonight is there's a revised operating budget because I'd added numbers in. There's also a default budget in here, which was not in here before. You have your budget rosters, which is the operating and default. I've created a default summary, so basically summarizes what the defaults contains. I've updated the co-curricular, the athletics and the technology piece because there were numbers that I needed to provide, so there were zeros in there before. I provided the district assessment breakdown. That has been finalized at the last SAU full board meetings, so that has been added. A food service budget has been added. I've included your surplus history and a copy of your trust. What's not included in your packet is the tax rate forecast. Typically during this meeting, I have that for you. But the town has not finalized their side of the tax documents that they need. I believe they have a meeting on the 7th where they're deciding some different things. So once that happens, hopefully the tax rate will get set shortly after that. Because that hasn't been done, I also don't have a tax rate history. But again, once that gets set, I'll make sure that gets set. And you do not have the estimated revenue. And the reason for that is we have not received the adequacy aid amount yet from the state. So without that, it's the largest portion of your estimated revenue. It would really not, it would be a fruitless effort to even bring it forward.
And that changed a lot because of the new budget from the state this year, I think, right?
I haven't seen it at all. They typically get it out on November 1st. I was hoping I would get it this morning and be able to draft it up even though it wasn't in your packet to bring to me. But I haven't even seen anything on again. So, but there, there have been some changes.
Yeah.
So just to give a brief summary of expenses that I'm gonna talk about more in depth. But the expenses that I added to the operating budget, I've added salaries and hourly positions. And I've included this year in each subsection in a note how many FTEs are in that salary line. The high school tuition has been included, but it is status quo. Meaning what I mean by that is a number we currently have budgeted for this year until decisions have been made. I've included all the health, dental and the related fringes that go with the benefit, the positions. I've included the modular expense. All special education allocations have been made. I've added in the utilities, the school board expenses, including the district assessment I just mentioned. Food service and grant expenses, and then the default expenses. So those are the new pieces that are in your packet here. Now I'll go through and kind of give you a summary per page, if that's okay?
Yes. And this has to do with regular education, not special education?
Well, there is special education in here as well. It's a mix. So I'll clean out the lines when we get there. I break them out into subcategories. So I'll talk about the 1100s and I'll talk about the 1200s, the 1400s. In each of those subsections, I'll tell you what section. But most of the special ed is in the 1200s. And then really 27 is really the biggest portion. So your first budget, as you know, mostly the attended, the full SAU board, as well as the principal's presentation, it looks a little bit different than we've had in previous years. Normally my budget packet has page numbers on each one, but I can't really do that because this budget that's printed from our system automatically does page numbers. So I'm just gonna reference the budget page numbers that are in the bottom corner. Okay? So pages one to three, I'm just gonna give a summary of the changes because a lot of the section within this actually had to do with the building. So some of the changes that I made, the teacher salaries increased. And that is because, one, there was an additional position added. But with that said, no additional FTEs. We were able to repurpose some FTEs within the roster. So no actual addition to an FTE. Yes, we just shuffled them around because we had some free ones. The reason why you see that number so high, which is 225, is because of the CBA. Remember the CBA passed? And I believe that number, I got a lot of numbers in my head.
Collective bargaining agreement.
But I think it was like 228 or something like that. So that's where that large increase.
Can I just ask a question about, because we get this question often, which is, you know, we end up most, most if not all years with some surplus, right? So if we're looking at the actuals, you know, it's less than the default budget. Do we know why were there positions missing?
I believe last year in particular was the world language or world cultures position, now that it's being called, was open. So that position remained open.
But as some values, yeah.
There was something else.
Reading specialists.
Reading specialists.
We, we also, we budget when we have retirement, following yearly budget for a master's plus five.
Yep.
Got it.
And we don't necessarily always hire a master's plus five, so that.
So that might be so.
Correct.
Even if everything is still.
You could realize the savings there. We could hire, obviously, somebody with a lot of experience. Typically.
And even with, and then the other piece could be potentially not even just retirements, but you could have a personnel change and they may come in less or more than what was originally.
Got it.
There's a decrease in the regular ed pair, um, regular ed staff aides, I should say aides, not professionals, due to personnel changes and they're utilizing less FTEs.
But that number will also be subject to the CBA that the town does.
Yeah, yeah. For any changes, yeah, that would include that as well. And then the high school tuition, as I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, I put it in as status quo. That is on page. Yep, top line on page two, I put it exactly as it is budgeted in the current budget. Until we get some high school tuition rates and the enrollment, I'm not able to calculate it.
So that does not include the cost of choice?
It does not include. Exactly. It is to be determined.
Looking at this online or anybody that's looking at this budget, this choice is not included yet.
Correct.
Yes, so I would hold off on calculating percent increase. Because it will cost more.
Yeah.
Yep, so I put a note in there, says high school rate and, and enrollment still to be determined.
Yes.
So I put that note in there so we know that that is not going to happen. As soon as I get those, I'll update that for you. The total increase for the 1100 regular programs is 253,701. And again, that really, the biggest driver in that is your positions. And that's guiding because of CBA. On pages four and five, this is gonna be your special ed section for all your special ed programs. So special ed teachers have decreased. And the reason for that being is, is there are fewer FTEs being budgeted. The special ed paras have also decreased. This current year, we budgeted for 24, next year we're budgeting for 22.
Is that because we think we need 22 or we're not able to find people?
That's what Mrs. McConnell believes we need. Correct. I'm gonna speak for you, but I don't.
The contracted service and special placement line, which is on page five.
Is that correct?
Is on the top.
Yep, page at five, right at the top is the contracted service. And then your special placement is kind of in the middle. It's the 120569. Those are, both of those lines are going up and Ms. Beckford can speak to those. But they're going up. Those are based on the, the student needs that we have now and anything we know that's coming through.
And that's special ed services, so like.
Special ed services, yep.
Do you want Jess to kind of review what's.
That may also, yeah. Yeah, so the contracted service, and Amber mentioned the 323 at the top of page five. I just want to remind you that that is a reflection of the combination of lines. So in your centralized admin cost line, which was 12 previously, is down to zero. And that is now combined into that contracted services line. So at the executive board and SAU board, we talked about starting to streamline and budget special education a little bit differently so that it's a little, provides a little bit more clarity to everyone of what's included in that. The central admin costs 323 and the diagnostic line, which was 330, are down to zero. Those have been zeroed out. And they are now combined into contracted services. So that accounts for a large increase in there. There's also nursing services which were added, which were not previously needed. So that accounts for that large increase there. Placements, I can go into a little bit more detail in non-public. Obviously, I can't give you too much. But there were some change in placements for this year and for next year.
In the diagnostic portion that Jessica just mentioned is in the 2123 line. So when we get to those, you're gonna notice that there is a decrease in that section. And that's because those expenses has transferred to the fund.
So no lead on here?
It sure is.
Yeah, I've tried to make notes.
Right in the account that we noted here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just to kind of, I'm gonna pass this out for you at the end, after Amber's done going through her budget. But I have a kind of a little snapshot for you of each of those kind of SAU managed special educational lines and what's, in a general sense, what's in those lines. So I'll pass that out to you after.
Is, is that generic enough that we could post that online as well for folks to see what's in those lines?
Yep.
Great. And I'm kicking myself because I had a beautiful highlighted budget with a bunch of notes and calculations and things, and I left it at my house. Think it's on a ride this afternoon. But, um.
I said, everyone should go get it for you.
Yeah, you're right. Repay the feevers.
It's a long drive.
That's true. It's a long drive. So I think I calculated earlier for the line, budget lines that had moved. I think it totaled like 175,000. Okay, I'll see, I remember things sometimes. The additional on top of that is those nursing services.
Okay.
And I can go into a little bit more detail in non-public.
Got it.
But not, okay.
So that subsection, that 1200 category increased by 738,492.
And the, Mrs. McConnell is here tonight too. So if you have any building level special education questions, she would be able to answer in her budget. Jess and McConnell work together on the budget. Some of it's kind of out of the building and some is in the building.
And Ms. McConnell and I have met several times to go over those numbers. And we've gone kid by kid, service by service. So it's not just me kind of making numbers up for Deerfield. We, we have met multiple times to discuss what's needed for students and.
And then, I mean, in terms of budgeting, obviously, like what we are putting together is a projection based on what we currently know. How, how do we account for like a new family that moves in or like how?
You don't.
Okay.
Because, because you can't, you can't just fluff, right? You can't fluff into the budgets like, oh, if we have a kid who needs a one-to-one para educator and an added district placement, you can't just make something up that doesn't exist yet. Because what if that doesn't happen? What if we move out?
So the numbers are based on actual.
Current needs.
Current needs.
And that really is the whole premise of having that special education trust fund.
Right, right.
That's your insurance. That's what we're doing. That's our insurance policy.
It's my.
It's the school districts insurance policy for those instances. And seeing what we're seeing now, I think there's a strong case being made for bolstering and really adding to that fund if possible for future years.
You're probably gonna end up needing to withdraw from it.
Right, this year.
We will need to.
So we're gonna wanna have a discussion when we get to one articles about, about very strongly adding funds to that. Or significantly adding.
Okay. We are hoping to have, the next report you'll see is your surplus report or year-end balance report, whatever you wanna call it. And Amber will pull over based on the invoices that have been coming in. And Jess, they're updating the special ed invoices like crazy so that we really can give you an estimate of where we think we're gonna end. It's still really early, but your, your stuff is really over expended already in special ed. So we need to keep a really good eye on it. So we should have that to you at the next meeting.
Cool. And that's because we can't fluff the budget.
Right, right.
We, there were things that were unpredicted that happened that we just didn't know were gonna happen.
Got it.
Any other questions on special education?
Do you guys have questions?
I was wondering about the, we talked about, we might need another LEA for high school. With the, because we're gonna have different schools.
Yeah, so we have, we currently have an LEA, you guys have an LEA. It would just be expanding that to a full-time position. So because that person.
Budget or is that something?
Yes.
That's in the SAU budget, which does come in here, right?
Correct.
The con, in the content.
And that's in the contracted services line.
Contracted services, okay.
Um, and.
That's currently carried?
It's in there.
It is in there.
So it's changing any part-time LEA to full-time.
Yeah, correct.
And that's to manage the.
To manage more than.
Yeah.
The next account code is 1400. There have not been any changes that I made to that section. But I did make a note that that section went up by 4,031. Mostly, if I can remember correctly, I believe most of that was increases for, in the cost of like officials in dues.
And just like another question, this is sort of a small budget line, but for curriculum stipends, for instance, we have. Are we in a different, am I?
Yeah, different section.
Oh, okay, I'll wait, I'll wait.
No, that's okay.
Oh, I see where we are.
All right, so page, a little bit more on page six and then we're in page seven. So guidance salaries on page six, which are right in the middle of the budget, have been added. This again is due to CBA increase. No additional FTEs have been added. We just mentioned about the diagnostic line, which is towards the bottom of that page on page six. You'll notice that there is a zero there. And that's what we were just mentioning. We shipped those costs up to the 120532. The nurses' salaries on page seven, right at the top, has been added. There have been five additional days added to this. That five, those five additional days will not be included in your default. So if you look at the, the middle column where it says proposed 2425, and then you look a little bit over to the right where it says proposed 2425 default, you're gonna notice those two amounts are slightly different. And that's because of the five days. And I'm not able to add the five days because that is something that has not made it in the budget the last several years. We've tried because the district keeps ending in default.
Are we gonna talk, and maybe you're gonna go over this, but like what, how we do build the default budget? And like what is included in that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. When we get to the.
Perfect.
When I'm done with the budget, what I'll do is I'll, we'll go through kind of the summary. I have the summary that's in here and then I can explain how it's created. All right, so the total section for 2100 is a decrease of 79,592. On pages seven and eight, that is going to be your curriculum and library services. I've added in the staff course reimbursement. Those were, are part of the budget bargaining approved expenses. I've added in the library on page eight, the library staff members. Their salaries have been added. Again, no additional FTEs have been added to that. That 22 section has, account codes are an increase of 7,230. Do you wanna ask a?
I wanna ask my question now, yeah. So for curriculum stipends, the actual for last year was 5,375. And we budgeted 12,000 and now we're budgeting 15,000. So what, like, I think those are included part of the contract, is that right? For the CBA? Yes, so one of the things that we have not been able to account for is that some of the curriculum stipends have been paid for, for curriculum review board. The CRB stipends have been paid out of a grant. And we've lost some grant money and so we've tried to reconfigure some of that.
Got it.
And that, we were starting to pick back up on summer work. There was a decrease in summer work due to all things pandemic. So we, we suspect that there'll be some work done over the summer and after, after school hours, including subcommittee work with that school, which we are anticipating to continue that work over the summer as well.
Okay. And I don't ask to make accusations, I just ask to ask.
No, we appreciate it. I'll add in, in that line, under the note that some of this was previously covered by a grant. We tried to do that in some, a lot of the other sections.
Perfect.
Because we have a lot of grants that are coming to an end. So we wanted to make sure that if a line increased, that we noted that was the reason. I'll make that note there too.
Thank you.
Pages, let's see. Page nine and 10, those are your school board and SAU management services. So on page nine, right in the middle of the page down, so it starts with like school board salaries. I added in all of those figures. They pretty much have stayed status quo year to year.
Can we go to, so to the school board salaries? The prior school boards have declined their stipend. But when there's a new board, we like to ask if you want that stipend put back in or.
I bud, yeah, we budget it as it has been, but certainly that can change.
You can just think about it if you want and let us know. But you, there was a board stipend at one time.
And that's under board expenses?
Board salaries.
Yep, yep, it's like right in the middle of the page.
Got it.
And the majority. It's a dollar.
It's a dollar. I think, was it 500?
20 cents for.
I think, I think the first year I was on the board, I think the board members got, it was 500 for the regular board members. It may have been a thousand for the chair.
Yeah.
Killed it, I think, my second year.
And you, you wanted to start the barbecue, so you sort of.
We funneled money into the barbecue and other things.
But it's in the board, so you should.
It's been going dead for a while.
Make that decision.
And then the other boards do, do have the stipend. So if you choose to do that, please, you know.
And then for board expenses, is that for the barbecue?
Um, yes.
Yep.
Do we know it's zero for the actual?
Um, I don't know. My guess is that those expenses, when they were billed, probably weren't billed to the correct line.
Can we check on that?
I would need to know who the vendors are. So can you check on that? Because I don't know who the vendors are. I'll check, I'll, Trish and I will, well, meet up.
Looks like it's been zero for a few years, a couple of years, anyway.
Huh?
Right?
We have.
No, no, actual 2223, nevermind, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, so yeah, we'll check on that for you.
Did we, was that?
Started to use the kitchen.
No, but when did we, we had a year off without a barbecue?
Not last year.
No, that's last year.
No, okay.
But we utilized our, our food service.
Right, so it may have gone with we.
Yeah, we should still be reimbursing food services.
A hundred percent.
Right.
Yeah, but was it a year before, was it a year before we did do it then? Yeah, but was it a year before, was it a year before we did it then?
Right.
We didn't do it.
A COVID year?
Yeah, it was a COVID year or two before we did it.
Sorry to say that out loud.
Yes, last year there was one, yeah.
Yeah, we'll double check on that for you. Let's see here, on page ten, you're gonna notice right in the middle of page if we're auditors. This line has gone up, pretty much specifically for the actuary, and we talked about this at the full SAU board meeting, that now because gas fee seventy-five has been, it's been implemented for some time, but now they require a certain size, or any size district to have to have these services, where previously it was a set number of employees, and then once you met that threshold, you would have to have these services. Now you have to have them regardless. So what they do is they take a look and analyze your, your benefit pension plans and look at the liability of those. They draft up a report and then they send that to me, which I then turn that over to the auditors, and that becomes part of their financial statement. We've increased some dollars in attorneys for the attorney fee, and I'm guessing we did that because the last couple of years it's been more than anticipated because of some things going on.
The actual is like double what the default was?
Yes, well.
Is that state?
Well, we've been trying, well, we've been trying to add money to this for several years, but because we have been defaults, it continues to get reverted back.
My question is, do we think that fifteen thousand is enough if our actual last year was twenty? That's, if you wanna at least it. Yeah, you certainly can. Should we have it or should we?
I remember this being a decent conversation last year too.
I think that was my first school board meeting.
It was, yeah.
I was like.
So would you like to increase it? Motion in a second, that's all it takes. Then a discussion.
You know, I, can we discuss before there's a motion? I don't know if I wanna increase that.
You can, that's however you want. I remember last year there was like, we did look at historically.
We did, I did do some of that, I did do that.
I actually think twenty is a fairly mild year.
Right, I don't, I don't recall anything crazy, but.
Does the, does the line, historical spend warning increase, yes, but based on the bottom line number at the end of this budget, you wanna be adding money anywhere into this budget. And we haven't even hit high schools yet, and we're already out.
Well, does it?
About a million bucks.
I mean, that's the question, is do we add it with, with the risk of it being a default budget?
It's, it's gonna be a default anyway, but we're up a million bucks, and we're, we haven't hit high school, so adding anything in the budget at this point.
But is it, but is it smart to not add because we're worried about it getting voted down while not accounting for what we actually are going to spend? Like if historically attorney fees have been twenty thousand dollars and we budget fifteen, like is that responsible budgeting?
No. But responsible budgeting in reality aren't necessarily gonna.
Well, that's true.
Gonna fall in line with each other. And I'll make a motion to increase it to twenty K.
We don't have to make decisions tonight either.
You can think about it.
Okay, my husband might be bringing my budget packet for me.
I'll circle it, then we may come back to it.
I think it's something we should think about.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting one way or the other, but I just, there weren't that many lines that we went over like by, you know, an extreme amount, and I would say double is sort of extreme. So just to think about.
You bet, and again, that is one that we have continued to.
Yeah, oh, for sure. I remember we added money to it last year, and doesn't carry through to, through the default.
And so, so back my brain back around again, sorry, go ahead.
What's the line below the attorney for?
That's district share, that is the SAU district share, there is a breakdown in your budget, I'd love to say the page number, but because there's no page numbers, it's like towards the end of your budget, it looks like this. We had the full SAU board meeting, we also had this, so what this is.
It's your portion, yep.
Yeah. It's the portion of the, the SAU budget that Dearfield pays. So your percentage was, is twenty-one, twenty, in this current year is twenty, twenty-one. So it didn't go up drastically in terms of that, but you did have an increase in your equalized valuation that drove that up. That's pretty much the big change for them.
And then.
And the state comes in.
Again, this is sort of small potatoes, but in terms of the actual for our district share was less than what we budgeted, is that because of SAU expenses were lower? So that, the budget actual was four fourteen and the voted budget was four twenty-two.
Nope, the voted budget was four fourteen, look at the column right before it.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, so four twenty-two is the current, that's what this current year budget is.
Got it, okay.
So the difference is forty-nine thousand six twenty-seven.
Got it.
Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let's see here, and so in that section for the total increase in the twenty-three hundred accounts is fifty-five thousand seven forty-two. In the next section at twenty-four hundred, I have added in the principal salary, that, her, that salary is up for renewal, the multi-year contract for that is, is up this year. So you'll notice in that line, right at the bottom of page ten, the number is the same, and the reason why it's the same is because discussions need to, to be had.
When does, when does that happen? In non-public, under small letter A, on compensation employees? Why are there so many letters in that non-public?
Got it, got it.
I don't know, Miss, Miss would have got some good props tonight, so.
That's good timing, did you guys arrange that?
The assistant principal, which is on page eleven, that contract is year two of year two of the contract, so next year will be the final year of that contract.
Well, not the final.
Well, the final, the final year of that particular.
The termination.
I'm not trying to get rid of you. The final year of that particular contract. Let's see, we've added in the secretary salaries, which are in the center of that page eleven. No additional FTEs were listed there. We've added in the technology technician in the summer hours. There was a change in personnel the last time the budget was created, so that change is one of the reasons why that is less, as well as there are no additional FTEs added for them. The maintenance contracts on the very last line on page eleven, that was not in your budget before, that's maintenance contracts and the agreements, that is software that we at the SAU utilize as a full SAU. So what we, you know, our, our technology director goes out, gets prices, and is able to get better pricing because we're able to pool the districts together. It is based all on utilization, student utilization, whether they use the program. If they don't use a program that we, other districts use, then we don't bill for that service. So the reason for the increase for that is strictly because the cost of those programs have gone.
Okay, this is a potentially dumb question.
No, you don't have questions.
Well, okay, so for the district share.
Yep.
Is that for a particular fund for the SAU or?
That's for the whole budget.
Our entire budget? So there, there are no funds, there are no tax solos that go directly to the SAU?
But is this maintenance contract not included in that?
It is not included in the SAU.
Got it.
They basically just said.
Well, that's a good question.
Yeah, you know, we don't pay for it out of the SAU budget, but he does, he just does all the background work.
Got it.
And then one of the other big reasons is, is because instead of sending five different, you know, checks to a company, we can send one.
Got it.
And then we just built the district board. Let's see here. Twenty-four hundred, course reimbursement has been added, that's contractual, so part of contract. And the maintenance contracts, I just mentioned that. Communications funds on page.
Twelve.
Twelve, right at the top, that's your internet services, so that's for twelve months. That was added, that wasn't in there previously. So the total increase for the twenty-four hundreds is sixteen thousand one ninety. Any questions on any of that? If I'm going too fast, let me know, my brain works super fast. Alright, page twelve to fourteen is going to be your operation, your building operation accounts. I've added funds in for custodials, the custodial salaries are included in here. There is, includes five FTEs and the suburb custodians, no change in FTEs there either. We've added in the modular rental, we've entered into a twelve-month agreement, I was able to get them, they originally wanted to increase it, and I came back and said, how much did it cost them?
Thank you.
As soon as I said that, they stayed at the same price. So we were able to keep the rate the same. The first amounts that they gave me, I believe it was like a ten percent increase for twelve years and then so on. So I was able to keep it the same.
Please.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw it out one more time. For warrant articles, if you can please have the bios for those at the end of the series.
I have them already.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I was, just in case you needed them, I asked for them.
You will know. Sure, they're probably about what they cost new.
I wanna say, if I can, no, I got a lot of numbers in my head right now, I wanna say it was like fifty-four, and I wanna say last year was like sixty-two.
Oh, wow, how generous of us.
We're working on it here.
Oh, my God.
Yes. So it's a buyout because, why?
So, can I?
I mean, they're just about at the end of their life, right?
Every single year we ship them thirty-some-odd thousand dollars. Now, twenty-five years ago, if we just bought the damn things, we would have owned them and we would have spent.
I get all that, but.
So they're here for a certain amount of time longer, because even if we would have started an addition project next year, it's gonna take three years before you pull them out. So at some point, you need to look at the diminishing returns, so we can spend ninety thousand dollars in rentals, or do we look at spending X amount of dollars and own the damn things?
No, I understand that part, but what I don't understand is why is the buyout? It sounds like we just keep extending the contract.
Because, because we keep extending the contract.
And how long's the contract or will we extend it?
Twelve months.
Just did it twelve, twelve months.
But because every time we say the words buy the modulators in this town, people get upset. Although fiscally, the most responsible thing we probably could do would be, would have been to buy them twenty-five years ago. But if they're gonna be here for three or four or five more years, they cost us more to rent on an annual basis than they would for us just to buy them. And then at the end, we bring a dumpster in, we smash them, they go in a dumpster.
Alright, I guess.
Cause that's the only way they're leaving this town anyway, is gonna be in a metal box.
Alright, I wanted to say, this number I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think. So don't quote me, I wanna say it was like eighteen thousand dollars to like remove it, like it's, it's expensive to remove that.
It costs nothing to shove it.
Through the company that we lease it through?
Yes, I did ask, cause when I said, how much is it gonna cost to take this away then? And they gave me that number, I want, I remember it being absorbently high, the number eighteen is sticking in my head.
But because there's no recoverable value.
Right.
If we own them, and when we're done with them, literally, the excavation company smashes it with an excavator, they pick it up in a couple of pieces, it goes into a dumpster, it's gonna cost us five thousand bucks.
For less than eighteen thousand dollars.
Significantly less. And they're gone, because the only way they're leaving this town is gonna, you can't.
Okay, so what you're saying is we should do a warrant article where we try to buy out this shit?
Yes, and then people in the town are gonna say, but we don't want the modulators, but absent, in addition on the building, they're gonna be here.
Right.
And that process is probably, if we start it tomorrow, we have a building open three to five years. So.
Right.
The math says we should probably own.
Okay, I hear you, thank you.
With that said though, it, it, I would recommend that if you did a warrant article, that you still left in.
The money to.
The money, and then would just be good faith that at the end of the year, that you would not use that money and you would return it back to your town, if that warrant article depends. That would be my recommendation.
You could even write the warrant article, maybe, so we know that we have in the budget or the default thirty-two thousand bucks, there it is. Thirty-two thousand dollars, and say the payout is ninety grand, a hundred grand, you could write a warrant article for sixty-seven thousand, because you could draw that thirty-two to help fund a warrant article, because that money's being spent regardless.
Right, right.
Right, because that will make it to the default.
So you would just shift that money into funding the.
You could do that.
The awful money. Discussion for warrant articles when we get there.
Anything else? On that?
Oil and beer.
Yep, I'm moving there now, so electricity's been allocated, propane and oil has been allocated. We are, we reached out, I reached out to Chris and spoke with him in regards to the propane and the oil. Our contracts for those don't end until, I believe it is April. So we have to basically go off the rate we currently have, and then add five or eight percent to that, eight plus five percent to it. The other thing I looked at was I went through all of the bills, see how many gallons we actually utilized, and so I put in more of what we were utilizing. So you'll notice for like the oil in particular, I believe in the last couple of years we were budgeting for more like thirteen or fourteen thousand gallons, and we really have been using between ten and twelve, so I made that modification.
Are we bidding with it, we're not bidding with the talent anymore for oil and propane.
We did go with them.
We did go with them, we did, yeah. We, ever since I've been here, we have used them, but I remember last year, I believe we looked into it on our own, and that it was cheaper to go with the town.
It was, okay, so we're still using their, their buy.
Yes, correct, so we won't have that till after the budget's already been voted and moved forward. So, but I wanted to account for some increase because the chances are, yeah. And then the funds for liability insurance have been allocated, that's on the bottom of page thirteen. There is a significant increase there, what I will say is I've noticed this in all of the districts, their rate just has substantially gone up.
If we owned the modulators, would we need more liability insurance for those?
I would, I don't know that it would be any different than what you, because they're, they're on your property now, so they have to be covered, so. I mean, I'm not an insurance person.
Sure.
But I would assume that, because they are.
Something we might wanna look into if we talk about purchasing them.
Sure. So the increase for the twenty-six hundred is sixty thousand eight ninety-two. The next section is on page fourteen, which is transportation. In the center of your budget, you have your high school transportation, this is a multi-year contract. Your high school is holding on, includes two buses. And then underneath that is your elementary buses, we have budgeted for seven buses. The other portion that is included in this is your McKinney-Bento transportation, which is required by law. So that is not special ed students, so that's why it is in a regular transportation. So we're estimating about fifty-seven thousand dollars for those expenses.
Remind me how many buses we currently have?
Five, I think.
Five?
Four, five.
Elementary schools?
Five, yeah.
Seven, so we're, we're budgeting seven.
Well, that's the money we budget for, cause if we, if in the perfect world we had all the drivers that we need, are supposed to have, we could run seven buses.
And, and I don't know what the McKinney-Bento transportation is.
Students who have become homeless during the school year, we share in the cost of transportation to get them wherever the best, it is in their best interest to go.
Okay.
So sometimes it's in their best interest to stay here, sometimes it's in the best interest to go to their new school, but we share the transportation with the other district.
Or, or the families move here and they, they're staying in Man, they're finishing up the school year in Manchester, so then we share.
Right, wherever's the best interest for them to, for the kids to be. Right, wherever's the best interest for them to, for the kids to be.
Okay, so we'll share costs of Manchester or whatever town.
Thank you.
I will say, there was a lot of discussion about busing last year. And what we should, but how many buses we should budget for. So something for the board to think about in terms of how many buses.
Well, last year, we reduced it to.
We reduced it and people got upset.
We reduced it to six for the elementary school.
And then the NBC added it, but then what happened at Delivered If? I can't remember.
It came back out.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, once this is finished, it goes to the NBC. The NBC can add things, take things out. Is there whatever, but then it could come back during delivery.
Seven in the contract. There are seven in the contract. But even though there are seven in the contract, they will only.
Only pay for.
They will, we only, the district will only pay for those that is utilized.
Right, but what I'm wondering is if we put seven in the contract, can we then turn and say, we only want six? If they had seven for us, would they let us reduce?
I, I bet they would.
Okay.
I cannot imagine that, especially since they haven't even been able to provide all the buses. I cannot imagine in this world that they would say, no, you need seven. They're gonna wanna utilize that bus.
You're almost as excited about your budget as I am.
I know. I still have a long time doing this.
You're just throwing the other one aside. It's no good.
They would wanna repurpose that bus. We've also added in the special education transportation. As well in the very bottom of that, page 14, under lines 27, 22, 518 and 519.
It's the reason for the increase in 519.
So those are.
For the essentials at a different school or.
So those are directly connected to your placements typically? So as your placements change, your transportation will change. And just to give you an idea, one transportation vehicle usually is costing around $85,000.
The total increase in transportation is 173,199. We're all in the wrong business.
Please do it.
Pages 15 and 16, those, these are gonna be your fringe benefits, they're all your 2,900 accounts. The health insurance, right now, we're still estimated, we have not received the rate for health insurance. We will receive that typically between November 7th through the 10th. They have a meeting, then they go back, their board goes back and decides how they're gonna set the rate. I have heard some communication that they believe it's gonna be below double digit digits. I'm estimating around 8% because that's about what it was last year. So that's what I've included in your budget. It also accounts for any plan changes and any personnel changes. Dental, I need to change the note, but the amount is correct. It's no longer estimated. It is 4.7% is the rate of increase for dental insurance. There is also a no change, I just wanted to note on the, I believe it was propane, propane line. In the note, on the propane line, I had in here estimated 5% off the current rate. Oh no, I guess I don't need to. I was, in that amount originally, yes, is 2.948 is the actual current rate. And I put the same number as I gave the new amount. So I just wanted to note that I had a. That is on page 13. Didn't wanna forget that, sorry. We are anticipating that life insurance and disability insurance is going to decrease about 10%. We did receive a letter, it said approximately, I think it was like 12%. So I'm like, well, it says approximately, so I went 10, hoping it's not. Well, if it goes up, that's even better. But I'm thinking maybe around 10 if you're saying approximately. So all of these lines correlate back to all of your salary positions. The retirement rate, which is on page 16, there is not, I have not heard of any changes in the retirement rate. So that will remain the same at 19.64. So the changes you're seeing there are strictly either salary increases because of the collective bargaining unit or personnel changes. One of the other pieces that we don't have in here is any, as we talked about earlier, any increases. So anybody that's not covered by the CBA is not included in here. Let's see here. And there were no retirements have been included. I'm not sure if there's going to be any, but I have not included it. The total increase for fringe benefits is 203,497. Page 16 and 17, that's gonna be your transfer to food service and your food service and grant expenditures. On the bottom of page 16 is your transfer to food service. I'm anticipating around $4,000 to have to be utilized to offset the food service budget. Most of that 4,000 will most likely be from unpaid school accounts. If there is accounts that are unpaid, the, any surplus that a food service program has, they cannot utilize it for accounts receivable. It's a regulation.
Can you just explain how the food service program works? So it says transfer to food service, like what does that?
So they have their own budget, which is also in here. So they have their own budget and then they have their own set of revenues that go with them. So their revenue and their expenditures, you know, we have to net them to zero. They have to be netted to zero. So if there is a difference between what we anticipate for revenue and what the expenditures are, we either do a transfer from the operating budget to cover it. And/or if they have a surplus, we can utilize those dollars to help. But there are certain expenditures or liabilities that you cannot utilize a surplus for. And unpaid lunch accounts is one of them.
Okay.
We have the food services down to only a 4,000 dollar loss.
No, that is.
That's your.
No, that's just your, that's just your transfer.
No, but, but that, that's what is basically.
Because we're gonna use, I'm into, I would like to, we need to use the surplus that you, that the food service program has.
Right, so I guess what I'm getting at is, we had, we've had years where the food service was.
The transfer was much larger.
The transfer was 30,000, 25,000.
And that's because you didn't, the, the food service program did not have a surplus.
Okay, so.
Yeah, well, and actually, that was before you rechanged the structure of the program too.
Structures and vendors and everything else.
There used to be full-time employees receiving insurance.
So that program is almost self-sufficient.
Correct.
Almost.
Correct. Oh, well, no.
The surplus.
No, so what is, we are getting additional funding from the state, which is really.
Okay, well, it's still.
So over the last couple of years.
Food service is costing the taxpayers 4,000 dollars.
For now, but what I will say is the program is not sustainable. No, rarely is a lunch program sustainable because of the overhead the program has. You don't bring in enough revenue. But during COVID, the districts received a substantial amount of money that really covered a lot of the costs. And because of that, it created a surplus. And so we're able to utilize that. And last year is the first year we really saw the surplus. And so we put some of that aside to utilize for last year's budget. And then some for this year's budget, current year, and then for next year. Well, last year, when we ended the year, we didn't have to utilize any. So one of the things is, is if there is a shortfall in the food service program, you want to use a surplus because you can. Depending on the size of your district, you can only keep a certain amount in your surplus. The state doesn't allow you to go past a certain threshold. So they will require you to utilize it in some fashion. We're choosing to utilize it to offset the budget so that it doesn't affect the operating budget as much. Make sense?
Yep.
So it's definitely going up more than 4,000, and that's just a portion. Actually, you can see right down below. So if you went down to the very last line, or not the very last line, but the food service, the 5401. That 235, 330 is the total of the food service budget. And there is an increase of 57,460.
Right.
So we're utilizing surplus and then the 4,000 to offset. That budget can be found. In the packet, it's like right towards the end.
Right, food service.
Yep, if you wanna look towards the end, maybe that would be helpful. It's right before the surplus history.
You don't have, you don't have an estimate of revenue for food service?
I don't have esti, I do, well, I do on my side, but I don't have a sheet to show you because that's only a portion. But I put together an estimated revenue I had to order to come out of this public. If I did some work on my end, I just don't have the breakdown for you tonight.
So I think the question I would ask is, what do we check for a meal? And it isn't necessarily a budget question for this time of year, but we should look at, we have an adjusted.
An increase, yeah.
The lunch.
It's been a few years.
260, I bet it's 260.
260. So does $3 make the food program solvent or not? Or should we at least have a discussion so we can try to have an idea? It's never a popular thing to discuss, but. Probably should look at it again.
And I think I'm not positive, I'll have to double check on this, but I think there is, there's not, I don't think there's like an endless amount that you can increase it. I think there, it has to meet certain criteria in order for it.
I would totally lean on you for whatever time served.
I, I don't remember what they are, because it's been a while since we've increased any of the lunches, mostly because for a portion of time it was free. Because the state was covering it. So I'll look into what that is.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth a discussion if like the local food supplies is going up 10,000.
Yeah, the cost of, of food is gone up significantly.
The, the only thing that hasn't inflated in the last like three or four or five years is the cost of lunch.
Is the schoolwork salary?
The cost of lunch and schoolwork salaries.
Well, one of the other things is, is that we, it's harder to find these materials too. So a lot of times we're having to go to whatever place going to provide. The supplies that we need or the food we need. We used to go, we, we still do, do like a buyer's group, but a lot of times they don't have the supplies we need. So really around COVID, that started to occur. So they gave a little bit more immediacy on like where you could purchase things.
One more. So does the food service budget carries through default, right? It's not, it doesn't revert to last year's?
The only, it does not. The only thing that would not carry is, because you have to provide lunch, would be if you had a salary, like any salary increases. So like if you gave a 2% increase, let's just say, that 2% is not gonna be given to the default.
Okay.
But the rest of the expenditures need to because you have to provide lunch to your, to your students.
So yeah, so I guess I would ask if we can have that discussion at some point.
Yeah.
So the budget still needs high school tuition changes, if there's gonna be any retirement, and then any increases that are not covered by the CBA or a multi-year contract. So that's what is not included in here. Any questions on the operating budget before I, you know, briefly go over the default budget?
Could you just explain like these last few lines before the grand total, the like.
The grand expenditures.
Yeah, like what is?
Yeah, so the, the capital projects and the expendable trust transfers, those are your warrant articles that end up in there. The grant expenditures, that is what we are anticipating to have expenses for grants. There is a direct correlation with revenue, so it will offset in net zero.
I see.
Okay, so what only whatever is spent and whatever revenue is received would be. The budget doesn't pick up anything additional.
Got it.
And then the food service expenditure is the budget that we just talked about, the food service budget. You have to, when you go before the public, you have to do your total expenditures, what your total like liability, I would call it, is. Because that's how much you're approaching it. So you have to include those two amounts along with all of your operating expenses.
Okay.
But those two lines have direct revenue that offsets.
Okay, so like the capital product transfer of $100,000, that is also on the revenue side. So there'll be a revenue of $100,000.
Well, these ones in particular, they're transferring to capital reserves, you're taking it out of your budget and transferring. But those would be warrant articles that are funded either from your surplus or by taxation, depending on how the warrant article is written.
Okay.
All right, so what happens is, is when you have warrant articles that are outside the budget, they don't go into the budget until after they are voted on by the public. They have to pass before they become part of it. So then once March comes and the votes come in and they say, yes, you can have $100,000 for your paving site. Then we, I go back into the budget afterwards, add that amount in.
Okay, and then for grand totals. The budget actual for 22, 23 is higher than the default budget.
Yes, and that is because you had utilized your trust funds for like your project.
Yeah.
So we have to extend out of the budget, but the revenue offset it. So it's not a shortfall overall, it was a revenue, it netted out utilizing revenue from your trust funds.
So there was, the surplus was less than what we had for trust funds? I'm just trying to figure out like how we calculate surplus.
So.
So your surplus is your, any unanticipated revenue? And any budget or budget appropriation that wasn't you utilized.
Yes.
Okay, so you add those two together. Plus, and then there could also be some assets or liabilities that may have been released from the prior year that weren't used. So that could also add into it. And then you look at what your fund balance is, then you have to subtract out any of your warrant articles and/or if you utilize capretainage. So in the last budget packet that Kristen presented, there was a year-to-date in there, and I broke all that out for you.
Okay.
And when we talk about like surplus.
Right.
Right, because there's been scottled on the interwebs about surpluses.
Correct.
We haven't returned surplus in a couple of years.
Just two.
Two.
Last year and this year, yes.
And that's because there was warrant articles that consumed the surplus.
And someone into emergency resources.
And someone into retainage.
Into retainage, sure.
So, you know, there's discussion about, well, the surplus should be used to pay for things, projects and whatnot at the school. And in effect, it is, we're putting it into the trust fund so that we can then plan properly and expand it on projects in the school. Because in May, when we find out there's a surplus or there might be a surplus, we can't go, great, put a roof on the building. That's not proper planning, that's not how you go about it. So we're taking those funds with authorization from the taxpayers because they're authorizing it through the execution of our warrant articles. We're putting the money aside so that we can properly plan for projects, improvements, programs and everything else. And I'm only saying that just because the true clarity of the statements that we see online are, oh, there's a surplus in the school district. You know, they don't spend the money, they don't do this, they don't do that, they're not taking care of anything. That's entirely false. The school district is requesting the potential to use surplus funds by putting them into the, by funding warrant articles that go into our trust funds that allow us to then draw out in a planned and controlled fashion responsibly.
Yeah, because there are parts of a budget that, you know, we've made budget for something, but then, let's take a special ed for instance, what if you had a student that leaves? Now you have additional funds in that line, that is unanticipated, you wouldn't know. You could have, you might get additional catastrophic aid, might get additional Medicaid, things like that that are over and beyond. And so on, towards the end of your packet, I did include a surplus history. So as Zach was just mentioning, like so FY '22, the year ended at 866,000. That whole amount was applied to a million dollar warrant.
Right.
Okay, and then this, this past year, the 2023, it was 565,000, but we had 3,000, 300,000 in warrant articles. And then the remainder went for maintenance.
So to the extent of those two years, there was no surplus because the taxpayers authorized us to withdraw the excess funds to fund the articles that you mentioned for. So although there was a surplus prior to funding the articles, once the articles are funded, there was no surplus. We use the allocation given to us by the taxpayers previous year.
And we, this is more for when we're talking about warrant articles. But we, you know, when we're drafting warrant articles, we get to decide, is this gonna be funded from surplus or taxation?
Taxation, new money.
So we ask Patty. What we think, if, if we're, you know, projected to have any surplus or like how things are looking. And that sort of guides our decision. And I think that the order of the warrant articles on the ballot dictates what gets funded. And I think that the order of the warrant articles on the ballot dictates what gets funded first.
Funded, talked about.
Yeah, so let's say we have five warrant articles for a hundred thousand dollars each, and we only have two hundred thousand in surplus. Then only the first two warrant articles would get funded.
Correct, yeah.
Even if they're all approved.
But the process we use to, to, to utilize the funds given by the taxpayers is through requesting the funds into the warrants.
Yeah.
Into the, either the trust or a specific projects. Because you can't roll up into May and be like, oh, great, we have three hundred thousand dollars left this year, let's go do this or that. That, that's not responsible name for the town's funds.
Um.
And the fact that there's a surplus is due to a number of things.
Right.
One of the things is that Trish watches the town's money like a hawk, the SAU watches the town's money like a hawk. And they, they do every, they do everything they can to conserve the town's funds, um, as to every extent possible.
Well, and we are budgeting fourteen months in advance, you know, so things change.
They're our best projections.
Correct.
There was a one-day sale on paper and I did get a late afternoon text from, said Trish begging for my lunch.
I emailed.
I don't know, I don't know what a paper sale is.
Both of the things we get excited about.
True.
I saved twelve cents already.
Twelve cents is better than no cents, is what I say.
It was a good deal.
I say to Mrs. Langley, when she says it was thirty percent off, I say that's still seventy percent on.
Oh, my husband loves it because I get very excited about coupons.
Well, we're at a national break, I'm going to pass around this.
Uh, any other questions on the operating?
This, and again, this is not the last opportunity to look at the budget.
Yeah.
Um, we have, I think, two more meetings planned to discuss said budget, so, um, to obviously take time, look at it, if you have questions, ask them tonight, ask them at another meeting. You know, obviously we want people to feel comfortable. If you are looking at something and think, I don't think we need that, that's totally fine. Make a motion or bring it up for discussion, we certainly can. Um.
So, what?
This is okay for the public, right?
Yeah, there's no student-specific information in there.
We'll put it on the website.
Do we have a copy for Errol and for Maureen? Do we have enough?
I can make some more.
If we can.
Speaking. I'll put it on the website tomorrow, you can give one to Errol since he's here.
If you're related, we should.
This is actually, we'll have to more.
Uh, Maureen's in.
Maureen, yeah. Oh, I thank you. Maureen is also on the budget committee and she's bringing us tonight.
Great, thank you for coming.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's good.
I wanted to make sure it's kosher.
Yeah, no, these are just, these are the services that are currently in the budget, but in a general manner, so they don't identify how many and what students.
Okay.
But just to provide some clarity around special education, because I know it's difficult sometimes when we attach million-dollar price tags to special education, you have no details that go with it. And we can't talk about it.
Right, so this is my attempt at like trying to provide you some clarity in the special education.
Yeah, I think this is very helpful. I think, you know, there's a lot of people, myself included, and I've said this before, that I don't, like, I'm not familiar with everything that goes into special education. So I think like that seeing this list is very informative. There's like, there's a lot of things, obviously.
So we have charts, we have kids in Deerfield that go to charter schools.
Correct. Yeah, charter schools are open to the public.
Yep.
And so a lot of the, if they are in charter schools, it's parental placements into charter schools.
But we're responsible for all the special ed costs.
So, yes, so even if a student attends a charter school over in Keene, if they are from Deerfield, we are responsible for the cost of that special education.
Do we have to provide transportation to that student if?
Not necessarily. There are some circumstances we do, but not generally.
Not generally.
Yeah.
But we do have to either send staff, pay someone to go there, and we have an allee rep.
Correct.
We have to attend meetings, just like we do for high school students, so wherever they are, we have to send someone.
Yeah. Google Meet comes in handy, right?
We at the point where we would open as we agree with the NBC?
Um, yes, I think. Really, do you want to go through the default real quick?
Yes.
Or just talk about how default is created?
I don't know if you want to do the budget stuff first before you hit the default, but you know.
It's, I'm not going to go line by line and change, uh, you have a description of the changes. I don't know that I necessarily, unless you would like me to. Um, I just would want to talk to you about how one is created. So what it is, for those of you that I know, now, it is last year's expenditures plus or minus one-time expenses and/or contracts. Mostly multi-year contracts, but, or a programs like, let's say you had a reset, or a placement cycle or something like that, that has been voted on at, in at least one year, and those continues to move forward, those would carry forward in the default. So things that would not go in a default would be additional positions over and beyond your FTEs. So earlier I said, oh, we added a position to the, the teacher is, well, we were able to repurpose an FTE somewhere else. As long as you don't go over your total FTEs for your budget, then you're okay, you can repurpose within. So that's what we did in order to stay within, um, not, to be able to bring it forth for the default as well.
And then there are like certain legal things that have to go to default, right? Like special ed, so even if it's not what the last year's budget was, like any increase will carry through the default.
Correct, yeah.
That'd be true for high school tuition.
Yep, yep, um, district assessment would carry through, um, fringe benefits would carry through, would carry through unless it is, a position has been deducted. Like say, for instance, we say, oh, yeah, we have forty-two FTE, we added a position, you're like, nope, we can have forty-one. That may not, the fringe benefits may not carry.
Or the fringe.
Whatever position's been taken, have it.
Okay.
But if the positions are in there, the fringe benefits need to.
Got it.
Okay, but if you had, if, say you had forty-two in that last year or this year, and then you added forty-three, the position doesn't go in and the fringe benefits don't go.
Got it.
Okay, and same thing with increases, anything that is not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, so increases you'll talk about tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Those would not make it in default time.
Got it. So like, I have no, I remember how you had this last year, but I don't remember the answer. For busing, let's say, because busing is a contract.
Mm-hmm, and it's a multi-year contract.
Yes, so if we decide to budget for six buses, default would carry seven.
Correct.
Okay.
Because that is what your contract is for. So that's pretty much what I've done, um, right after the budget, is I just went through and did a summary. I looked at exactly how I went through the budget, um, changes or changes, um, a minute ago. I subcoded the seven hundreds, the twelve hundreds, the fourteen hundreds, and I described any changes that occurred, and I put in the amount of change. There's not a huge difference, um, this year in regards to what you're proposing and what your default is.
Correct.
Um, and that's strictly because the majority of the increases that are occurring are all contractual.
Of course.
Or required by law.
Yeah, so the difference between, it's like less than sixty thousand.
I, I want to say it's like, yeah, fifty-four, fifty-seven, fifty-forty.
I'm not blessed with math, but that's what I'm looking at.
It's pretty close. Sometimes that happens, sometimes that doesn't happen. Um, this, I think a few years ago, Deerfield was in, I think it was like in the thirties or forties.
Leah McHugh is also on the budget committee as well, I just don't know her name, I apologize.
That's okay.
Did you get the papers?
I did.
Okay, sorry, it caught up to me a little late.
Um, you also have your budget rosters, um, within your packet. You're, you're going to notice that they're going to look like they're duplicated, um, and that's because I need to provide you with a regular operating roster and a default roster. The only difference you're going to notice is going to be, um, those five additional days for the nurses. And I believe, and I did, I highlighted that particular line in gray.
Correct.
You'll notice it as zero dollars.
Oh, yeah.
That is the only difference. Some years, there might be other, you know, additional changes, but for the budget we're proposing, the only difference in regards to position is just those jobs.
Um, so for the nurse, for the five additional days, is she working those five days and we're just finding money somewhere else?
A grant?
But she's not working for those five.
Did she do that for her costume? She does, she'll, yeah, she doesn't occupy for the days. She did receive a stipend over the last couple of years, not for that, more to cover COVID.
Oh, got it.
Extra work for COVID, but it helps that, you know, it's a stipend.
Yeah.
And I will say that I believe every district except for maybe one has this in their budget. It isn't like just because Deerfield wants it, like it is, it is helpful to all the districts.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can we, for the budget committee and for the public hearings and everything else, at the top of the rosters, just break out all these individual rosters and just put the summaries? So certified summary, forty-two FTE, special ed, forty-one FTE, so that it's broken out all on top. Still have all this?
I can do whatever you want me to do. I thought my notes within the budget would be enough.
I, I love you.
My even, did you notice at the end of the budget, I had put the total FTEs in red for you?
I do, but I also know that Harriet Katie.
He needs it in foreplay.
Harriet Katie at the public hearing is going to say, well, how many certified staff is here? And rather than having to flip through, I want to be able to just go here and go certified forty-two, non-certified thirty-eight.
I will do whatever you would like me to do.
So if I could just answer her questions.
So you want a chart at the top.
Just those lines, just duplicate those lines.
Summarize.
Yes, like a summary of the.
Summary of FTEs.
If I, if it's too much, help me out.
It is not too much. It's probably, I think I'm capable, so I put notes in each line to.
I just know the questions that we're guaranteed to get asked, and it's easier if we just ask them in advance and they answer some words, it's easier to find.
A hundred percent. I would love to be proactive.
Okay, anything else?
Um, that's all I have for you tonight.
Okay.
That's a lot, I know.
It is a lot, um.
There will be additional the next time, well, hopefully, the next time you get your packet, um, with, there will be, um, revenue and the tax income.
Okay.
But until I get those numbers, I can't.
I'm sorry, so then we need to be coming out of budget.
In insurance.
We need to have a discussion on how to budget high school.
Yes.
Because we may not finalize.
Don't say that.
Don't include that.
Don't say this, it's all going to be fine.
It's fine, it's fine.
Um, so I will just note, my math, which could be flawed, was, is that the proposed budget is approximately a five-point-six-seven percent increase from last year's default.
So if you look at the top of your notes, I calculated it for you.
I can math sometimes. Okay, but that is without high school.
And that is, right, and that's also taking into consideration the seven hundred thousand dollars worth of warrant. I think it's really important to note that. Other, the community members will recognize that, and so I think we need to be transparent about it.
Show both.
So we show them both, so we can't, I can't show them both in the budget because the program doesn't allow me to, so I think we just need to speak to it. Um, so if for, taking into consideration the seven thousand dollars worth of warrant articles that aren't included this year, or for budgeted for next year, because they wouldn't speak. Um, if you, um, don't take them into consideration, I mean, do take them into consideration, it's nine-point-eight-six.
Okay.
Okay.
So nine-point-eight-six increase without high school. Without.
Without high school.
Didn't we have seven hundred thousand in warrant articles? I thought it was only three hundred.
No, um, I thought it said seven hundred thousand. No, no, three, the three thousand is.
Three hundred.
I mean, the three hundred thousand, what, the ones you had was six hundred?
We had different funding sources.
That's for just upcoming year.
Ah.
Right, different funding sources.
Right, okay.
So like you had, um.
Right, that's this year's budget.
Correct, so if, from the expendable trusts, um, there was a six hundred thousand and a hundred thousand.
And again, we haven't assessed how high school impacts, but we get.
Correct.
We're up ten percent. A lot of that is, well, be, actually, the increases are beyond our control because they are obligations that the town has to satisfy. Obviously, they passed the CBA for the teachers' contract, that is a quarter of the increase. We have transportation, and the rest is basically tied to special ed, if you break it down into three fairly large chunks, that's worth all those. And we face this on a yearly basis, is the board, you look at, okay, well, how do we try to effectively, you know, look at and review the budget? And, you know, special education, we really don't want to touch, we have once in my time here. And there was a unique set of circumstances for that. Outside.
It was.
Outside of that, um, you know, we can look at building level stuff, its reductions in staff would be a way to reduce the budget. That's something that I don't think we would consider. And then transportation is a place where we cut a bus, or move a bus, or do this, or do that, is a place of service. But unfortunately, because of the legal obligations and the structuring of the budget and things that we have to provide, it's hard to find a lot of fat that hasn't already been found prior to it hitting us.
And you're, you're correct in regards to the three hundred thousand, that's what was utilized in surplus, um, but you had warrant articles that were for taxing.
Got it, got it, I, yeah, I didn't remember this. Okay, um, so we did, uh, agree to have NBC members attend, and feel free to come up, um, and ask questions, make comments if you'd like. If it would help expedite the NBC meetings. Yeah.
It's a lot to avoid.
As I said, it takes some time, we will, we will have another meeting about this, don't worry.
We may have, Mr. Rogers.
Fine, welcome.
You have anything, Ms. McHugh?
I don't have anything yet.
Yes.
Yes.
I really don't have any particular comments on these, because I believe I've had less than data to look at and understand them. And I don't think you got the, I guess the notes you were speaking about, Amber. Uh, I mean, some of the notes are here, but I guess you.
I have. They were included in the packet, because I just, I just typed them up today.
Gotcha.
I have an extra few more.
Terrific, I'll, um, you were just talking about the five-point-seven-six and the nine-point-whatever, I, I was looking for them here.
Sorry.
I couldn't, couldn't find them. What I think might be helpful, and I, I don't know how to do this, it's a graphics issue more than it is a substantive issue, it would help. And I think you were the one who gave me the idea, Ms. Cohen, um, of actually highlighting what is, what is, you know, changeable and what really isn't. What you would have to change to change the unchangeable, you'd have to change the laws.
Right.
At, at some point, I think. So, you know, putting that in perspective would be helpful in a graphic form.
So we have.
Chart or, you know, whatever.
In years past, we have color-coded the budget with discretionary items basically versus say the non-discretionary items, contractual items. This is a new format and a new program.
Well, the other one was done in Excel.
Was done in Excel, I love Excel.
This is, this is directly printed right from our software.
Right, I'm actually thinking that, that a, a sub system, rather than making people go through all this.
Yes.
Just a separate chart that says.
So I am working on right now, obviously, I have not input all the numbers, but I am working on a budget presentation um, to provide to the town with like pie graphs that say, this is how much we pay for teachers, this is how much we pay for curriculum, et cetera. And then what is discretionary versus non-discretionary, like how we build the default budget, just like some basics about the budget to hopefully make it a little bit more digestible to people.
I'm, I'm not worried about digestion, I'm worried about understanding. I mean, and just, just knowing what, you know, what lies where.
Yeah.
So that when, when people look at numbers, they, they sort of realize, uh, you know, we have to change something else to change that number.
Right.
That kind of thing, so.
So yes, I will, um, I am going to be putting together a little presentation, I will do a draft, um, probably for the next meeting, because now I have some numbers at least to input, uh, but for the board, and if you would like to come, you're welcome to, of course. So that we can talk about how we want to present this to the town as like education about the budget.
This will be a regularly scheduled DCS board meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll just be probably at the end of the budget discussion in two weeks.
Would it be helpful if I sent you the federal laws?
Would it be helpful if I sent you the federal laws that are attached to some of those budgets?
That would be incredible, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's what you're looking for, too.
Uh, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
Amazing how this might make a good article.
You know what? It's true, maybe I can get it together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other NBC members? Okay, like I said, we are meeting in two weeks, so we will be discussing the budget again, so please come back and ask any questions or share any feedback that you would like to.
And then can I just mention, as, in years past, we've asked, if you know you have questions, send them to us prior to the meeting. Sometimes it takes a little bit of research, so if you want to just send me an email, I can forward it on to Amber, and that way we can come prepared to answer your question. That goes for anyone, NBC too.
Yep. Okay, good. All right, that concludes our budget presentation, unless anyone has anything else. Okay. Are you guys sticking around? Are you gonna? You can bail.
Well, did you, do you have questions you want asked to ask during non-public for special education, or are you guys all set?
Patty, do we have questions that we want to ask?
I don't think so, but when we're in, when we're in non-public, if there are questions, I'll come back to you, so you don't, you don't save this whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah, you're good.
I'll stay tuned, bring it to non-public.
Oh, you don't have to do that either, you're good.
You're an amber bolt.
Yeah, you can.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you guys, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. They're gonna be like, wow, why, what are you doing at home?
That's good.
You're just gonna go home and work on budgets, you know that.
How can I? Bye, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to review of correspondence. As everyone who is here remembers, luckily, at the presentation by the New Hampshire School Association, I am going to take one of his suggestions, which was, um, not to read all of our correspondence into the minutes, but itemize that we, who we received emails from and on what date, just to make sure that if people sent in comments, they know that they were captured and that they'll be in the minutes. As a general premise, if people send things to the entire board, I make sure they get forwarded to Patty so that they get included. Um, if things just come to me, it sort of depends if, if the board needs to know about it, or if it's just a direct question, it might not be included. Still hopeful to write to know if anyone needs it, but, um, generally, the best way to get your public comment or your email into the minutes is to email all of us, or indicate that you'd like it to be um, in, attached, and then we will definitely do that. Okay, so I'm just gonna go through these, and if there's any that anyone would like to talk about, let me know. Um, we received an email from, on October fifth, from Danielle Cassidy about kindergarten recess. Um, Ms. Withy did respond, um, so if anyone has questions about that, we can certainly address, or we can defer to Ms. Withy.
I'll clarify, she responded to the email she sent to me.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Withy received a separate email.
Same information, though.
Excellent. Um, on October, these might be out of order, but, um, on October sixteenth, we received an email from Anne Travers about supporting high school choice. Um, on October seventeenth, we received an email from Linda Bean regarding her opposition to a lottery option for school choice. Um, on October nineteenth, we received an email from Stacy Marchioni requesting board packets in advance of meetings um, and her thoughts about the professionalism and decorum of the board during meetings. Um, on October twenty-third, we received an email from Mr. Kevin Burville regarding a prior letter that was sent to us by Mary Ann Clark and his rebuttal of her letter. October thirtieth, we received another email from Kevin Burville regarding high school choice and lottery, his opposition to having a lottery. Does anyone want to discuss any of those, um, correspondence?
Kindred for future, I'll put them in the order of.
Uh, that's, doesn't really matter. I don't have to worry about it. Okay, so we will quickly do board reports. Is anyone here from PTO?
Did you want to do eyes on updates?
No. High school updates, I cross it off before, I keep pre-crossing things. Okay, high school updates, we unfortunately don't have much of an update. As we shared at our last meeting, we're unfortunately working with a lot of boards who meet once a month. And we don't have anything to share back. What I can share is that we have drafted contracts to three schools. Concord, Pembroke, and Cobran. Our attorney has reviewed them, and they are off to the other schools, so we are awaiting their comments, their edits, or their approval of those contracts. We unfortunately can't vote on anything until we have the contracts back. And willing participants. So that is unfortunately the update, I don't have a specific date that we can guarantee because we, we're sort of at the whim of the other schools reviewing the contracts.
Do you want me to give a quick little?
Please.
So Cobran is almost ready for us to review back, and Pembroke Academy, I, um, has a meeting next week, and I asked the board to come with any comments or questions to be prepared, so I'm hoping that can get brought up quickly, too. I'm not sure what the board's thinking, yes.
Concord's next, school board meeting is next Monday, um, they also have a negotiations meeting next Wednesday. I will say Concord's, uh, school board election is next Tuesday, so I am slightly concerned that that will delay things a little bit because they're bringing on new board members, um, who may need to get up to speed before they can vote on things. Yes.
I think it's worth noting that the information that was in the presentation from a few months ago may or may not be accurate anymore.
That's true.
Things have changed.
That's true.
We've listened to the community.
We've made that statement several times.
And I'm gonna, we can keep making it, doesn't mean anybody's gonna hear it, but, um, so the circumstances about how something may be structured may or may not look like what we previously discussed, but at this point, we're waiting for what's going, we're waiting for contracts.
And that meeting was, that was an input session for you to present something and get input.
Correct.
You took, you took that input.
And we took the input and we went back and renegotiated.
Yeah, yes. So yes.
I can add one other thing, if you ask.
Please.
Um, just to let the board know, I did attend a meeting at Cobran this morning, they are starting back up. They used to have, I think, quarterly meetings with the superintendents who send students to Cobran. Um, and in anticipating having more of our students, they did invite me this morning, which was nice, so, um, I did go and get to hear about some of their, um, some of the ways that they operate, and they did offer, um, that if we do have a tuition agreement with them, that they, um, give the superintendents access to their student information system. So I would have an account, and I would get to go in and look at student attendance.
Yeah, that's true.
Everything from Deerfield students, so that was, that was kind of nice, so.
Awesome, thank you for attending. Uh, anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, unfortunately, we, we very much sympathize with everyone, we would love answers as much as everyone else.
But we need willing participants.
But we need willing participants. And obviously, like I've said before, there's a lot to negotiate, it's not just the tuition amount, it is. The contracts are multiple pages long, there's a lot of clauses in them, all of which they could come back and want to change, which we may be open to, some of which we may not be open to, so unfortunately, there's, there's still work to be done. And it is a slow process, especially when most of the boards only meet once a month. All right, now, yes.
Pembroke's twice a month, right?
Yes.
So it's just Concord.
It's really just Concord, yeah.
So, in fairness, it's Concord that meets once a month.
Yes.
Okay.
Concord meets once a month.
Because Cobran, we do with, with the trustees, but.
I don't know if the trustees have to weigh in.
Yeah, it's a little different.
I think it's gonna be stronger on Pembroke.
Yeah, we, we have it in Pembroke.
A little bit.
I'm sorry, we should.
Um, okay, so now we are on to board reports. I don't think anyone here is from the PTO.
Oh, can I just go back one thing, I just want to mention, too, we still have never heard back from Dover, right? So we just, yeah, we tried several times, and Dover never responded, so they're not on our list, that's why they're not on our list. They haven't responded to us.
Willing participants.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ken.
No, 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 um, so there are not PTO updates?
I'm PTO.
Oh.
Of course. But I didn't prepare any updates.
Okay.
I guess the only thing I can really talk to, because I missed the last PTO meeting, is the Spirit Sticks that we sell um, last Friday of every month, that schools start to pick up again, and kids love it, so.
Is this your Halloween decor or anything?
No, this was at the school.
Okay.
But the PTO did provide the, um, the rewards.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, so we have three top winners, um, and they provided a gift card, the PTO paid for the.
For the book fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good one, I like that.
All right, uh, on to executive board. We met as a full board and approved the SAU budget. Um, I did post the SAU proposed budget on the Facebook group and on the town website, if people are interested in looking at the SAU budget, it is already approved, but in case anyone wants the details. Um, and then we do not have a meeting next Wednesday.
Just an ARA meeting, yeah.
Not us.
You don't have to do.
Um, I think that's it for executive board. Cool. Uh, principals report.
Yes, this covers, um, September seventh to October fourth today. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
September.
October fifth to November, October thirty-first.
All right, let's start over.
This is way, it is October fourth.
As I was saying, and I was thinking, that doesn't look right, why are you still speaking? So Thursday, October fifth, we had advisory day here, our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders went on an advisory day field trip. It's a, uh, we do this at least three, I think, three times a year, once in the, uh, fall, sometimes in the winter, and definitely another time in the spring where they advisories, um, go to a, a location this year, it's sixth grade went to Beach Hill Farm, seventh grade went to DeMarah Hill Farm, and eighth grade went to the Monks. It's a great community building, um, day, this particular advisory at the beginning of the year is an opportunity for them to find out who is in their advisory for some of them. Um, most people know by this time who's in their advisory, but it's a, a great day to get together and, and for community. Um, on Friday, the sixth, right before, uh, our Columbus Day Indigenous Day weekend, we had our professional day. Um, I think I reported this out last time as a, as a upcoming, but, uh, we did get together, worked in, on curriculum committees. Um, we have a couple of curriculums that we've mentioned a few times that are up for board review this year, so we are, uh, there'll be a CRB update. Um, Ellen, did you want to do that?
Yeah, I was just, I was good, that's all I was gonna say, there's four of them coming this year, and art might be early, because they're trying to finish theirs early, so they might be as early as December.
Yeah.
Finishing it, so, yeah.
Uh, so we're trying to space them out a little bit. Um, there was some social studies work done in the morning, ELA and math curriculum work done in the afternoon, a smattering of other important work done throughout the course of the day. And we, of course, had our Croctober pop-up lunch, which was delicious. On Thursday, uh, the twelfth of October, our fourth graders took a field trip to Strawberry Bank. We've started back up the classroom of the week, which for new folks is an opportunity for, um, Mr. Greve and I, and we've included Mrs. McConnell this year. Uh, so we, uh, we did a, we choose a class to be the class of the week. On Mondays, I go in and do morning announcements and state their community, uh, meeting, morning meeting. Um, and then throughout the week, Mr. Greve and Mrs. McConnell visit, uh, either they bring a snack one day, or they visit, uh, uh, Mrs. McConnell was digging out pumpkin guts today.
Five hundred and fifty-three seeds in my pumpkin.
Winner, winner. Um, so, uh, it's just a good time, a good opportunity for us to get in the classrooms, and for, uh, on Fridays, I visit and do what we allow. Uh, I also am visiting an advisory magnet each week, so so far, we've visited Mrs. Scelsey's class for class of the week in fifth grade, Mr. Ferguson in fifth grade, um, and this week is Mrs. Mozgrover in second grade, and, um, last week, I was able to visit Mr. Luciano, Miss Morris's advisory. The week before was Mr. McCabe and Mr. Greve's magnet, um, and I just joined them for their, uh, community meeting as well, community, um, meeting as well in the morning. Um, on Monday, the sixteenth, as you know, we had our high school information night, we had about eighteen families in attendance. Um, on Wednesday, October eighteenth, uh, we had SAU leadership, um, that's an opportunity for the SAU assistant principals, assistant principals, and, um, specialty coordinators in the district to get together, try to get together once a month, uh, the third, usually the third Wednesday of the month, um, we meet at the SAU. Have, um, usually have a pretty good time, lots of laughs, and we get a lot of work done. Um, on Thursday, the nineteenth, um, our first year mentees met, and our second year mentees met, so that program is, is going well. On Friday, the twentieth, our first graders took a field trip to Squam Lake. Um, also on Friday, the twentieth, our advanced band went to a Concord High School football game, they called that jump up at Concord High School. Uh, so they got to see, uh, the, the band in action at Concord High School. On Saturday, the twenty-first, our cross-country team participated in a championship at Cobran. Uh, Monday, CRB, which Ellen will report out a little bit more, she, she has any more information?
Nah, no more.
No more, no more information, okay. Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, our eighth grade, um, ELA class held a coffee house poetry celebration. All the kids had been working on a poetry, uh, po, uh, poetry unit throughout the month, and were able to, um, share their poetry. Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, fourth, our girls volleyball team won the playoffs and went, uh, on to beat Rochester. I can't, a couple days later, sorry, Mrs. Schute. They played the undefeated Rochester, and we were not undefeated, but the girls, uh, won the championship, so it's really, the, uh, our volleyball team is probably four years old.
Four or five years old.
Four or five years old, so Mrs. Cook, um, was one of the coaches, and they were just thrilled at their all-school meeting, we had them come up, and everybody cheered for them, and it was awesome. Uh, on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, our eighth grade, um, eighth graders took a field trip to Concord High School, they did a tour of Concord High School, met up with some former students, they all made a, an appearance. Um, I think they even photobombed the, uh, picture, and, you know, should have been in class, but, uh, and.
They're always texting each other for when they show up.
Right, right. Uh, and then after, uh, the tour of Concord High School, the bus, uh, took the eighth graders to Pembroke Academy. Uh, as Mr. Whitmore had mentioned, they took a tour, walked through his classroom, the kids were able to have lunch there at Pembroke Academy as well, so the, the kids had a wonderful day. They came back very excited about, um, the opportunity of high school, and, uh, the student tours are also happening at Cobran. It's, um, they weren't able to take us as a tour, a student tour, like Concord and PAO, they had something separate, so. Um, they did do, they have, students have been, uh, going to Cobran for their individual tours. Um, on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, our third graders did a polishing party. Our Critical Friends group is still meeting, CFE is something that meets once a month, I'm sure you're familiar with that. It's a, just an opportunity for colleagues to get together, and, um, there's protocols that they work on, and, um, there's usually a problem practice that they try to, uh, brainstorm through, so. That is, started back up and had their first meeting. On Friday, the twenty-seventh, was a busy day, all-school meeting, our seventh graders hosted, our fifth, third graders shared, and we played hide and go seek, all-school meeting edition. It was, I can't believe we pulled it off, but we did, not everybody hid in the seat, so. And also on Friday, PTO update, they provided a delicious apple bar, uh, for our staff, the staff thoroughly enjoyed it, and it smelled delicious in our, uh, in our office all day. We had our monthly fire drill on Friday, and we have, also had our first middle school dance, uh, the green and kindness magnet, um, held a Halloween dance, and it was, it was so well-attended.
It was the most, probably the most attended dance we've ever had.
Yeah, it was, it was packed, and everybody was dancing and having a good time. Um, on Tuesday, the thirty-first, we did announce the winners of the Great Pumpkin Contest, this is nothing, we had sixty, I think there were sixty pumpkins in this, yeah. All spread out all over the library, uh, so we had, uh, it was a very, very, um, good contest, Beth Moss, you headed that up, it was wonderful. And, uh, basically, just to wrap it up, um, a big thank you to Nurse Bonnie, she's been, uh, she had arranged for health screenings, so so far, our kindergarten for, through, uh, third graders have gone, next week, our fourth graders, um, will have their health. uh, fourth, third graders have gone. Next week, our fourth graders, um, will have their health screening and popcorn Fridays, um, have, have started back up. Beginning of October, they started up and as a fundraiser for our eighth grade trip. Just some upcoming things for you to know about. On Thursday, tomorrow, Brooke Ann Pietraselli, who is our, um, our tech integrator, is hosting an AI Academy. So she invited the entire, um, anybody interested in the SAU who are, is interested in learning more about artificial intelligence, AI, uh, to come and just talk about it and, you know, working through how is it gonna fit into our schools and what are your thoughts about it? And, um, so there'll be, there'll be, uh, several people here tomorrow afternoon from 3:00 to 4:00 as an after-school event. Um, don't forget to turn the clocks back, it's my favorite day of the year besides Christmas, and that is fall back on Sunday.
Why?
Because I get an extra hour. I was like, it gets dark at 3:00. Don't know, that's okay.
Okay.
That's okay to me. Uh, Tuesday, no school, parent teacher conferences. We're in no school November, um, as we like to call it. Uh, Thursday, the 9th, is our veterans breakfast, so at 8:30 from 8:30 to 9:30, our veterans are invited, our kids go down and have breakfast with, uh, parent or guardian. And, uh, at 8:40, uh, sorry, at 9:45 in the hour assembly, which is second to none. It is just wonderful. If you have an opportunity and you want to come, please do. We'd love to help you. Uh, Thursday, on Friday, we have no school. And I just want to make a, one more shout out if I may. Um, on Thursday, the 16th, um, Mr. Mark Ruest and Miss Ashlyn Radcliffe will be attending their New Hampshire Association for Health and Physical Ed, Recreation and Dance. I, I think it's called. Not Nittany.
No, no, they're too late.
All right. It is the organization in the state of New Hampshire, though, for physical education, health, wellness, um, and teachers, and Ashlyn Radcliffe and Mark Ruest are the teachers of the year this year for PTO. So Ashlyn is the elementary teacher of the year and Mark is the P E, um, school teacher of the year. So, um, they will be attending, um, an awards banquet that evening, there, the, this Thursday, that Thursday and Friday, the 16th and 17th, this, every year is a huge conference. And, um, so that evening, they will be honored at the awards banquet, so.
Oh, that's great.
Yes, we're very excited for them. And, um, I think, I, I think I got it all.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Do you have anything additional for the CRB?
No, I mean, really, they, they just, everybody went through and said kind of where they are committee-wise and that the big thing was just that four are gonna be done and they'll be coming to the school board to be presented, so that was really the big thing.
Excellent. NBC?
Uh, we met last week, uh, meet again next week. We got the town's budget last week. We will start working on the town's budget next Tuesday. And we filled the open position. Leah McHugh has been appointed, nominated, uh, whatever term is, I guess, correct, but she is now on the NBC.
Great. Okay. Um, policies. Can we move them?
You can move them. We're reading. I haven't received any suggested changes.
Can we?
Table.
Punt it.
Well, you can move them to the third reading.
Okay.
Unless you don't want to move them to the third reading. And then next meeting, if you're not ready and you haven't made changes, we'll just keep them on the table.
Okay, I think that's fine.
Because we'll, we feel, we can, we won't see them again until December 1st. So that gives people, our, the first meeting.
Yeah.
Gives people a month if you have suggested language changes to review.
I, yeah, I don't have any, but I would love to look.
Yeah, so let's just move them to a third and see how it goes next month.
So Trish, remind me, we don't have to make copies for Zach. Copies are good.
Thank you.
Prince, Prince Akats is coming. Okay. Um, informational items. Do you have anything? I have nothing. All right, we are back to public comments.
Earl Rhodes, Trish Street. This will be a comment from Mrs. Withy, who just indicated that there are a couple of, I guess, staff members to celebrate. Perhaps you could write something up for the Gazette so we can put them in the winter Gazette, if that would be appropriate in the school's view. Same comment goes for students, I guess. We talked about this, I think, one or two sessions ago. Anybody that needs to be, you know, uh, recognized or noticed for, for their achievements. Habit of publish at the deadline is November 18th, just around the corner.
Other public comments.
Nancy Chu, President Hill Rhodes. I guess I'm just saying this because I need to say it out loud. Um, listening to the budget last meeting and now this meeting and seeing that our budget is going up over a million dollars, the piece is still out. I'm so concerned for our DCS students. We have 480-ish students. They're the ones that are going to be impacted by the budget. I would love to think our budget's going to pass. Um, I would love to think that. If not, and it's a default budget, these are the students that will be affected by it. They have no control over that. We have to pay transportation, we have to pay special ed, we have to pay high school. And I don't think families realize that. I don't think there's, and I don't know how to get people to understand that, and not just families, community members. Um, that just really concerns me and I wish you luck with it. Because I think we'll see it, this building, people say we need to do things to this building. Good luck with that. Let's get rid of the modulars and all these, and I, it just hurts me that our, and I'm not saying the high school kids aren't important, believe me, I, I believe education for everyone's important, but I don't know that people realize where the hit of the budget will be, is here.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Earl Rhodes, Trish Street again. I was remiss to neglect, uh, thanking the board and, and, uh, Mrs. O'Donnell for attending the energy, uh, committee meeting along with Mr. Kufas. Um, I thought it was, I thought it was a productive meeting, but also a terrific gesture of, of town and school working together, so wanted to get that on the record.
Thank you. Other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we will, I will make a motion to go into non-public session pursuant to NHRS A91-8: colon, 3, AMA 2, subsections A, C, and K.
Just a second.
All right, roll call.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.